Okay, good evening. I am Ruth Charles and I am your moderator for the League of Women Voters event tonight for the Winona Mayor and City Council members. Our 2024 Voter Services Forum co-sponsors are the Advocacy Center of Winona, AAUW Winona Branch, Engage Winona, Project Fine, and Winona State University Department of Social Work. We are providing this forum live via government access channels on HBC and Spectrum, and the public is invited to be in attendance here at City Hall. We would like to thank the City of Winona for allowing us to hold this educational forum in the council chambers and use of staff and technical assistance with this forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to be educated and participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties, candidates, or tell voters how to answer referendum questions. We will read opening statements from candidates who are unable to attend. We did not receive one from John Kofchak today, but we will keep that available for later. For our home viewing audience, you may call in questions to be considered this evening. You can call 507-457-8280. A volunteer will write your question down and bring it to the question facilitator table. So this evening, we welcome the candidates for Winona Mayor and City Council members. For Winona Mayor running unopposed, we have Scott Sherman. Winona City Council District One running unopposed is Steve Young. For Winona City Council District Three, John Kofchak and Samantha Sam-Zerden Shortridge. Winona City Council at large, we have Jason David Dykes and Al Light. Please check your sample ballot on mnvotes.gov or at vote11.org to see which candidates are on your ballot. Tonight's forum is intended to provide voters with information so they can make an educated choice on the ballot. The views expressed in this educational forum are those from the candidates. The League of Women Voters participation policy and ground rules were provided to the candidates with their invitation to attend. This is a live cable TV broadcast. The public was invited to submit questions for the candidates through the League of Women Voters email site on its Facebook page. Question facilitators from the League of Women Voters and its co-sponsors viewed the questions, and the League of Women Voters moderator has final selection of questions to the candidates. This forum is being taped, may not be edited, and must be broadcasted in its entirety and in accord with all FCC regulations. The League of Women Voters will determine the questions to be asked, and attempts in good faith will be made to cover all areas of interest expressed in advance of the forum by the public. The candidates will not know the questions in advance. Questions that are hostile, partisan, embarrassing, inappropriate, or of a personal nature will not be asked. Questions on similar topics may be grouped. All questions will become the property of the League of Women Voters. Our timekeeper for tonight is Wendy Draves. Candidates will strictly observe the time limits on responses. The timekeeper will hold up cards to indicate that time is about to expire. Once the stop card is displayed, candidate will stop at the end of the current sentence. For the opening statement, there are two minutes. For questions, there is one minute, and closing statement, there will be one minute. The candidates with us today are, well, if you want to speak into the mic when I introduce you, just say hi or whatever, so then we know, but for Winona Mayor running unopposed is Scott Sherman.
Good evening.
Winona City Council District One running unopposed is Steve Young.
Hello.
Winona City Council District Three, with us tonight is Samantha Sam-Zerden Shortridge.
Hi, all.
And Winona City Council at large, Jason David Dykes.
Good evening.
And also running for at large is Al Light.
Good evening, everyone.
We have a rotation of questions of who, a rotation of who answers the questions, and I will address the candidates by their full name as it is on the ballot. And we would like to begin the opening statements, and our first speaker will be Scott Sherman.
Good evening. Thank you to League of Women Voters and all the sponsors of this event. It's crucial that we have this opportunity, not only as candidates but as a community, to be able to hear more about the people that might be potentially serving our community within an elected office. I am currently mayor. I am running unopposed. I am in the fourth year of my first term. From what I hear, I am the first mayor in the history of Winona to run unopposed. I don't know if that's a good or a bad thing, but in general, I like to tell people I got my summer back, which was nice. I did prepare for someone to run against me. I was getting my team back together, my campaign team that worked with me four years ago. I brought some of my banking and other things out of dormancy to get prepared for it, and I was surprised that I was running unopposed again. In the past four years, I've been through a lot. I have been here during what I would call kind of the revitalization of our community after COVID and the restrictions that we had been placed under during that time. I believe that we did a good job of bringing the city back out of that as safely as possible. We've also done a lot of work here in the community in regard to, I would call it kind of stretching outside of the normal avenues that the city should or normally would be working within. We've done some work in regard to mental health initiatives. I'm very proud of the fact that we've been working with the county on quite a few different aspects of governance. And then also, lastly, I'm proud to say that we, in the past two councils, we've done a fair job of finding a middle ground.
Thank you. Next, our opening statement will be from Steve Young, running for City Council District One.
Yes, thank you, and also thank you to League of Women Voters for putting on this forum and helping candidates to be able to communicate to the public. And it's with gratitude, a sense of purpose and responsibility, that I seek to serve the residents of Winona Ward One for a second term as your city council representative. I've had the honor of serving as a city council representative now for nearly one term. I've learned about street reconstruction, toured the wastewater treatment plant, seen the enormous pipes at the water plant, delved into the challenges of government accounting, oh my goodness, pored over the plans for our new fire department. I'm running for a second term to continue that work and continue the work of making Winona the place that you choose to live. Over the years, I've served thousands of customers in our business, provided dozens of college kids with safe, affordable housing, volunteered with the Chamber of Commerce, coached scores of kids to learn to ski, mentored dozens of youth through scouting programs, directed finances at church, and I'm excited to put those experiences to work to continue serving you on City Council. We face challenges, of course. Our city continues to slowly shrink in population. Expenses reflected in your property taxes continue to increase. Our roads, bridges, water lines continue to age faster than we replace them. But with patience, careful budgeting, Winona will maintain our essential infrastructure and will enjoy our perfect location between the bluffs and the river. So I'm looking forward to answering your questions tonight in our forum. I'm excited to move towards a Winona that is better together, and I want to thank you for your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Sam Zerden Shortridge, and she is from, running for District Three.
First of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters, their sponsors, the City of Winona for hosting, and you all for coming and watching at home. This is what an engaged citizenry looks like. I chose Winona in 2010, bright-eyed and unaware of all the city would give to me. First, Winona gave me my education and the desire to be a part of a community of learners who improve our world. After graduating from WSU, Winona gave me a second gift, a career, in which I've honed my skills for managing budgets, finding compromise among strong opinions, essential skills for any city councilor. The third gift Winona gave me was community. I've spent the last decade volunteering with local groups like Winona Area Mountain Bikers, the Fine Arts Commission for the City of Winona, the Recreation Alliance, Earth Day, Arbor Day, Boats in Bluegrass, coaching youth mountain biking, and cherishing the friends that I made along the way. My decision to run for City Council stems from a desire to repay Winona for all these gifts. I do this for my neighbors, young families who wish they could be more involved but are focused on raising kids, my elders who are looking to pass the torch, thank you so much, Pam Idon, for your faith in me, and students who want to be more included and everyone in between. Winona has given me so much: an education, a career, a community. It's my responsibility to give back.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Jason Dykes, who is running for Winona City Council at large.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Dykes, and I'm honored to be here as a candidate for City Council at large. I want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for putting this and the earlier two forums together, and especially everyone in attendance and online for your commitment to our community. Winona is filled with beautiful neighborhoods and dedicated residents who care deeply about our future. However, we also face significant challenges: rising housing costs, aging public safety buildings, and significant budget shortfalls, just to name a few. I believe that our city council should be a platform to collaborate, innovate, and be transparent. We must prioritize listening to the voices of all residents and ensure that each perspective is valued. My vision is to be a steward for Winona, to better our city and help create a place where everyone has an honest chance at finding access to housing, great quality of life, and the public services that meet their needs, and all of this under budget. To achieve this, I propose a multi-faceted approach. First, we need to focus on affordable housing initiatives that will help families stay in our city. Second, we should foster economic growth by supporting local businesses and creating job opportunities that empower our workforce. Finally, investing smartly in public services. I'm committed to bringing a fresh perspective to the council, one that emphasizes accountability and engagement. Together, we can build an even better Winona. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to engaging in meaningful discussions with all of you today.
Thank you. And our last opening statement, also running for Winona City Council at large, is Al Light.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for this wonderful opportunity. A little bit about myself, I came to Winona in 1977 to Winona State University. Was going to be a paralegal, but then I got the television obsession, so I switched to mass communications with a telecommunications emphasis. Spent a lot of time in the TV studio. And fortunately, about the time I left college, the cable company was hiring, and I did local programming, mostly consisting probably of sporting events, but we did a little bit of everything, working with the chamber, with the friendship center, with every college imaginable, with the police department, doing various different programming. And I did that for 14 years. Following that, I opened up my own business doing videotaping for people privately, as well as karaoke and DJ, and we even did some plays at the Black Horse and got involved in the arts quite a bit. And then finally, when I got a little older, I wanted a corporate job with corporate benefits, so I spent my time at Sprint. And after 12 years, T-Mobile bought us out and closed down our business call center. We were assigned businesses that we were able to take care of and develop relationships with, but I was at a point where I could retire early, and I want to use my retirement years to serve the city that I've grown to love and appreciate in my 47 years here. And I'm available 24/7 to work on the city council and help the city to stay strong, vibrant, and do it in a way that's fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for your opening statements. We're now ready for our first audience question. One thing for you all to know is that please ask me if you want me to repeat the question. I'll be glad to do that. And our first question will start with Al Light, and it is, what do you believe is the most pressing issue facing the city council in 2025?
Okay, well, always the priority of the council, and the priority for me is going to be a voice for the people of Winona within city government. And once again, as I just said, I want to be available to do that. I want to encourage people to participate, to call, to express their concerns, and then we can bring them to the council. The city does a really good job on the basics of what a city should do: providing water and sewage and park and rec and roads. And we need to continue doing that, but we do have challenges. Maybe one of the biggest challenges is housing costs, and specifically for the working class. We do pretty good on senior housing, we do pretty good on low income, but the working class is really getting crunched. I've talked with people in community development, and they're trying to come up with solutions on how we can expand, how we can lower costs, how we can do incentives to help improve that housing, and I'm sure there'll be more questions along that as we continue this evening with the answers and the questions.
Thank you. Next will be Sam Zerden Shortridge.
I agree with Al. Housing is a really pressing issue for a lot of Winonnans, and I agree that open communication between city councilors and Winonnans is really important. I think that through us continuing to identify space for urban infill and looking at our zoning, we could increase the variety of housing that we have and just how many houses we have as well. I think through collaborative funding sources, whether that be federal, state grants, LGA, any of those, we can find ways for developers to produce this new housing at price points that are affordable for the working class.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Scott Sherman.
Yeah, housing would probably be one of the most pressing issues in our community right now. You know, we recently paired up with the county to do a housing study that showed that the city of Winona should have, I believe it was something like 770 housing units in the next 10 years. That's a tall ask. The city are not, we are not developers, but we have a community development department that has tools in the toolbox to help spur development. We are trapped between the bluffs and the river. We have a highway in the between there, and we also have a railroad track. Ultimately, the comprehensive plan that we recently adopted does have the opportunity to change some zoning around the community to allow for higher-density housing, which would help enormously, as well as things like accessory dwelling units or mother-in-law units, they're oftentimes called.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Steve Young, who is Winona City Council District One.
Yeah, housing, sure, we're all saying the same thing. I'm gonna take a little different tact on that. Real quick, some points that weren't mentioned, and I certainly agree with the zoning, densifying, accessory dwelling units. We're looking at a housing trust fund. There's a fair amount of money, of federal and state money, that is able to head our way, yet you need a vehicle, you need a container, to be able to run this money through to be eligible to receive the money. It would be a housing trust fund. I'm gonna take a little different tact, so I don't repeat what everybody else says. At some point, Winona is going to have to think about decisions on space, okay? Are we ever going to build up on top of these bluffs? Here's my real concern: we are out of space for manufacturing. If we need jobs, we all understand that, we're out of space for housing as well. How would it feel like if a large manufacturer left town because of no space to expand? We'd feel terrible about that. At some point, we may need to think about building on top, out past these bluff tops. So just a thought.
Thank you. And finally, Jason Dykes.
Well, certainly, I would like to be available to the public. I think that's my number-one job, but the priority is definitely going to be the same as anyone else in this room, is housing. And I've had a few different folks that I have talked to where, well, let me back up a bit. I have a chance to see a lot of different homes in this town and a lot of different people, and one place that I see opportunities is condominiums for older folks. There's a lot of people who feel trapped in their homes, and those homes could be reused for younger families, and so I would like to see more developments like Willowbrook or behind Chickerloaf or Candlewood over by the high school.
Thank you. Our next question, and Jason, we're starting with you. Recently, the city council sold public land for a dollar to developers to build a hotel complex at 60 Main Street. The council also gave over $4 million in tax breaks as well. Now the city is raising taxes around 10%. Do you support this, or do you think it should be discontinued? Why or why not?
Well, I'm absolutely in support of that hotel. There are a lot of events that go on downtown, and there is just no place for people to stay, and I hate to see them having a good time and trying to get a ride back to their hotel or Airbnb and not having those options. The optics of the city selling that piece of property to a developer for a dollar is absolutely ridiculous. The developers would have developed it if it had been $10,000, $50,000, or $100,000. I think that we need to make sure that we are keeping the folks in Winona top of mind and that they trust us, and I think the $1 cost was a big mistake.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Al Light.
I think the future revenue coming from this project will overall balance out and be a plus rather than a negative. A dollar does seem low. I wasn't on the council at the time. I don't know what all went into negotiations with bringing this project to fruition, but I think overall, it's a great project. I think it's good for Winona. I know one of the possibilities being explored to raise revenue and to keep property taxes and other taxes down is possibly a hospitality tax. That would be included in a hotel project like this. So no, I don't have any major concerns about it.
Thank you. Next, Steve Young.
Yeah, great question. You know, and certainly I would agree with what Mr. Dykes said, that the optics on that just certainly didn't look good. Here's the thing to think about: the tax received on that lot of land prior to the sale was zero. That was government-owned land. Immediately, when that land was sold, the property tax became $10,000 per year. That lot had been vacant since 1972. The intent was not to leave that vacant for years and years. The intent was to have that developed. Since 2016, there were four different proposals, all of which did not come to fruition, and so you're developing on what's called brownfield. It's very challenging. There's polluted soil there, there's a railroad, there's water pipes. It's really challenging for construction to get in there and complete that, and so some of this is an accommodation to induce that builder to be able to build there. And we really need a downtown hotel. When that hotel closed, American, I believe it was, those were a loss for the community. And so finally, we again will have a downtown hotel. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Scott Sherman, running for mayor.
One of the things that I've come up with during my four-year term is I come up with these different sayings, and one of them that I commonly say is, when you're running for office, you're selling yourself, and once you're in office, you're defending yourself. In this case, I'll defend myself. I think regardless of what that dollar amount was for that lot, this will bring economic benefit to our community to have it here. Steve was right, we had multiple developers come through, they couldn't cash-roll it, couldn't make it work for various reasons. When the development group did come to us eventually, that was able to work with community development and come up with the pricing structure and the TIF that we offered to that development group, it was, it's going to be a benefit to the community. You know, I think a lot of times people get hung up on a number, and I'll be honest.
Thank you. Okay. And Sam Zerden Shortridge.
Instead of echoing what Councilman Light and Mayor Sherman have said about the facts of this issue, I want to use this as a point to push that we could have talked about this better to the community. The community understandably got a bit of information and feels misled, hurt, and upset. And that makes sense. We should be better with this and make sure that our community members have all the information they need to understand the decision-making process. I also want to be very forthright. This is a decision that I would recuse myself from in the future because my husband is a part of the development team. I in no way ever want to betray the trust that would be given to me, so it would be a very easy choice for me to recuse myself. That being said, a communications director could help best empower our citizens so that they understand the choices that are being made.
Thank you. Our next question, and Sam Zerden Shortridge, we'll start with you on this one. Winona County is known to have nitrates in its water. What is the city of Winona doing to protect the owners of private wells within the city? So Sam, that's for you.
This is something I need to educate myself more on. I understand that there are nitrates in water and that this is an issue for well owners. I know that city of Winona by and large uses public utilities and doesn't have wells, but we do have a handful of homes that aren't reached by public utilities and do need wells. Like I said, I need to educate myself more on this issue. I know that there are things that play into this decision and that the city is doing that I'm not aware of, and it would be a priority for me to make sure that I am aware of all of these issues so that I can best communicate them to community members and make decisions.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Scott Sherman, running for mayor.
I have not heard anything about that at all within the city. I, quite honestly, I'd have to refer to staff and ask what they're, if they've come across it, if inspections has come across it at all. I haven't heard anything about that, so I can't necessarily have a plan moving forward. I can say that the water that we provide through our city services are good and clean, and in terms of nitrate contamination, I have not heard anything about that, so can't comment.
Thank you. Next, Jason Dykes.
I was over at a friend's house not too long ago, and we were in the basement, we were setting up his appliances, and he pointed to something in the middle floor, and he said that that was his well. And I was quite shocked to know that that was such a thing. And honestly, I am not certain of this, but I would think that if you're within the city, that you would be connected to the water lines of the city. That's just part of it. So again, I'm gonna echo Sam here and say I would need to educate myself on this.
Thank you. Next, Al Light.
Yeah, that's a concern I haven't, talking to voters hasn't come up. I know at the council meeting last night, it was discussed, and maybe it's off-topic, but we have a unfunded mandate from the state to clean up nitrates from the city water plants, and I would like to compliment the council on, and the city, they seem to be wanting to get ahead of the problem because it's going to be a major expense, and at least from the discussion last night, the city seems to be wanting to get ahead of the issue before it becomes a major issue. But if it is a real issue with the wells, individual wells that are not part of the city, yeah, something I'd want to educate myself and look into.
Thank you. And Steve Young.
Yeah, thanks. I have well water at my house. Numerous of the homes on the edges of Winona, I live out in Gilmore Valley, kind of behind St. Mary's, and numerous houses back there are on well water. I tested my water a number of years ago and came back no nitrates. First I've heard, I'm not sure this really is a concern, it's the first I've ever been asked about this. Nitrates comes when there's been a lot of fertilizer applied to an area. I grew up farming, so I have some understanding of this, and there hasn't been heavy agricultural -- And there hasn't been heavy agricultural impact right in the city of Winona. So, I suspect there would be a little, if any, nitrates. Of course, testing is available through the county for a very reasonable fee. So, thanks.
Thank you. Our next question, and Steve Young, we will start with you. How do you feel about the transportation options currently available in Winona? Can all residents get where they need to go? If not, what could you do to improve transportation?
Yeah, great question. I've served as a rail commissioner on the Great River Rail Commission. And maybe a little bit off topic, we have a second daily train, which is super exciting, going between Chicago and St. Paul. Besides cars, I think we're all familiar with cars, how that works. We recently redesigned our public buses, our public bus route to try to be more efficient. We definitely concentrate on that, try to make sure that we are meeting people's needs. Taxi is a challenge. I believe, I may be wrong in this, but the last, oh, we have a dial-a-ride option through the bus as well. I believe the last taxi service failed, if I'm not wrong on that. And so there are some holes in transportation. Hey, we have Bird scooters. That's kind of cool. Summertime only, sorry. So, I don't know, can we get a trolley going again? Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Jason Dykes.
That's a great question. I was at the city council meeting where they renewed the contract for the Bird scooters, and it was good to hear that there was 8,000 individual riders and 30,000 rides last year, and they were able to increase the stock of Bird scooters. I would love it if the city could maybe approach either the same company or someone else and see if we could get some sort of e-bikes. I'm not sure if scooters are the best way to get to work, maybe something with a basket. I think that it's unfortunate that when the cab company went out, Lyft, I think that the cab company went out because Lyft came in and basically decimated the company, the cab company. And now that Lyft has sort of backed off a bit, has created a huge gap. So, maybe the city could approach Lyft and see if there's something we could do.
Thank you. And next, Al Light.
Yeah, when, back when I was at Sprint, I would take the bus, and the bus service is wonderful. And like Steve said, they've really improved it with the new routes. And they're better at, I used to get peeved because sometimes they wouldn't wait till the desired time, so you'd have to get out there plenty earlier, you might miss it. But they seem better now at making sure that they're there at the right time to pick you up. And it does a great job. The cab company is sorely missed. Lyft did come in, decimate them. Lyft was great, but now there's no drivers. You go on the Lyft app, and it's very rare you can find a driver anymore. So, it'd be great if we could entice the cab company back into town. That would also help with the revenue. And the Birds are great, and I think bike rentals would be a great idea in the nice weather as well.
Thank you. Next, Sam Zierden Shortridge.
I appreciate the new bus line and how we have reassessed transit in our city and the new Borealis line, bringing a second train to Winona. But these solutions aren't comprehensive. Right now, if you take the Borealis line to Winona, you get off, you stand at the train station, and you wait. You better have someone who's coming to pick you up because the bus isn't. For our students, the students who live in my ward, there are a lot without cars who need to navigate our city, and the bus isn't giving them everything they need right now. We need to find a way to strengthen that. And I understand that might mean more investment, and that's difficult. But I think that with investment in our public transit, we then could see return. Additionally, something that I've heard when speaking to students is that there's a lack of streetlights, and they don't always feel safe moving around their own neighborhoods after dark. If you live on campus, or if you are...
Thank you. We'll stop at that. And Scott Sherman.
I would agree. We have some holes in transit within the city of Winona. We did redo our transit lines for the buses a few years ago. I think those have served us well. We have dial-a-ride available to us. I believe the cab service actually went out of business due to insurance costs, from what I've heard. In terms of e-bikes, we have had those discussions, not only at the city level, but also with other organizations within the community, kind of adding on to what the micro mobility of scooters, having bikes available as well. I think a lot of people know me as like the bike person or someone who is interested in active transportation. I will say this. Winona proper is two miles by four miles. It's flat as a board. There is no reason why this city shouldn't be more walkable and more bikable.
Thank you.
I think that we have the opportunity. Oh, I do? Okay.
All right.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay. Our next question, and we'll start with you, Scott Sherman, running for mayor. And this one is, students from the universities and community college here in town often don't feel a part of local government. How have you engaged students during your campaign? If elected, how will you strengthen this relationship?
Yeah, great question.
And this one, just so you know, was emailed in.
Okay. So, for quite a while now, I've been working on developing what I would loosely call a youth council. There does seem to be an invisible wall specifically around Winona State University. I oftentimes interact with students and organizations at Winona State, St. Mary's, Southeast Tech, I'm sorry, I forget the...
Minnesota State College Southeast.
There you go, State College Southeast. Thank you so much.
I did an event there this morning.
Yes, I know, and I have to be reminded each time. But the interaction between our community and our students needs to get better. I don't have the answer for that, but I think that everyone in our community, both the students as well as our residents who've been here for many years, agree that they would like to see that mesh work a little bit better. In terms of being involved in government, this youth council that I have been working on, we have consulted with other cities, how they do different things, but that is something I would like to see come to fruition.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Al Light, who's running for city council at large.
As I understand it, and probably was 10 years ago, maybe even more, there used to be a committee where they would meet, I think it was every other month, with the student senate of Winona State University. I don't think that would be a horrible idea to bring something like that back, whereas at least a few times, a handful of times a year, they could get together and discuss. I would like simple things like making it easier to find the city council meeting on the website rather than having to go to the calendar and make sure it's on the HTML link that you're, you know, they should just have a button that says, "Watch it." And you can click on it, and the council comes up on your laptop or your iPad or whatever else they might be using. So, those are a few of the solutions. But yes, let's get the college more involved, if at all possible.
Thank you. And next, also running for Winona City Council at Large, Jason Dykes.
Well, I am a graduate of, actually both Winona State and Southeast, sorry.
Minnesota Southeast Community College. No, I didn't mean, you're right.
And so I am familiar with both campuses. And as far as my campaign, trying to reach out to those folks, I've done the things that you would expect. I've participated in the homecoming parade, and I've gone to the Get Out the Vote event, and I've even done some canvassing in the dorms. I've seen a bit of an upsurge in the number of my clients that are college level, a lot of freshmen that have been coming in and asking for help with their computers at my business. So, that's always a great opportunity to talk to them about what's going on.
Thank you. Next, Sam Zierden Shortridge.
Well, this one does feel a little unfair since I do work at Winona State University. All of these universities, whether that's Minnesota State College Southeast, Winona State University, or St. Mary's University, they all have student senate or a student governing body. It would be really easy to connect that governing body with our governing body in an effort to better collaborate and ensure that students feel like they're a part of this community, which they are a part of. And then a piece separate from city council, more at a community level in general. When I talk to students, a lot of them tell me that they don't feel wanted in our community. They don't feel important. They don't feel like they belong here. And that's a failing on all of us. If we want to keep these students, we need to treat them better. They deserve that. They're our community members. And part of that would be making sure that their self-governing body feels that they have a line to our local government.
Thank you. And last, Steve Young, who is running for Winona City Council, District One.
Yeah, great question. It's always a challenge in a university town, kind of that separation between town and gown as the way it is sometimes put. We had a great event, and some of my friends here that are running were at the Get Out the Vote gathering at Winona State, met the student senate president. I had served as student senate president a couple of years ago at where I went to college. I talk to college students a lot. We, many of our tenants are college students. And so I love chatting with them, kind of hearing their thoughts. And I, somehow, in the ones I'm chatting to, and these are upperclassmen, seem to say they feel a little more connection than I'm hearing from some of the others of you. So, I'm, maybe it's just me being the sunny optimist, but we've had some excellent conversations. And I think as they grow older and their time here, they do feel that connection. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. The state of Minnesota passed legislation legalizing cannabis. How do you envision the cannabis business being governed in Winona? And Steve, we're starting with you.
Okay, governing the cannabis business. Did we pass that moratorium? Can't remember. Okay, we passed the moratorium. We're waiting for rules to get written. Unfortunately, state of Minnesota kind of sprung this on us and then didn't write the rules, and then kind of expected us to write the rules. So, we'll have cannabis business here at some point. I think it's important, certainly it's important that it be regulated. We regulate alcohol, and the cannabis business needs to be regulated as well. These are powerful drugs that we don't want people of a young age to be partaking in. But we'll have common sense rules that will reflect the laws in the state of Minnesota once those finally get settled, and we'll comply and regulate our cannabis dealers similar, I would imagine, to how we regulate alcohol. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Sam Zierden Shortridge.
I think cannabis should be treated very similarly to alcohol. It's both vice. It makes sense. We already have a lot of this work done for us through our alcohol legislation, so making sure that we stay consistent and fair with cannabis feels really like a no-brainer. I'll echo what Councilman Young said. There's not a lot of advice coming down from the state yet, and we're waiting on a bit of that advice. Once we get it, City of Winona will analyze everything that's coming down from the state and make sure that they are being fair and equitable moving forward and how we treat cannabis within our community.
Thank you. Next, Scott Sherman.
Like Steve said, it basically was, to a certain degree, sprung on us. Staff has done a lot of work with the state to try and work through the legislation that was put in place. You know, there's some restrictions on minimums in terms of businesses that would be allowed within our community. We did put a moratorium on the business licenses until the first, and I can tell you that staff has been scrambling to try and work through that. You know, it's, in general, I think the council, the current council has looked at it as though it's like alcohol or tobacco. You know, we want to recognize that it can be pervasive in a smokeable form, and we want to protect those that need to be protected using the same federal legislation in regard to no smoking within a range of entryway.
Thank you. Jason Dykes.
Well, I'm certainly glad that there are a lot of people who don't feel like criminals now that marijuana has been legalized. Winona is uniquely positioned to earn a lot of tax revenue with folks from Wisconsin coming over and purchasing our legal weed. I would like to see smart legislation at the local level, but I don't think we should get in the way. I think that honest setbacks from cannabis locations would make sense. I don't think we should have them near schools. And I don't think that, but I don't think that we should say only two businesses are allowed in town, because at that point, we're going to be picking our winners as far as which businesses are going to benefit from these changes in the law. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Al Light.
With or without dispensaries, it's been my experience that it seems to be pretty prevalent in this community, so we might as well have it regulated, safer, and at dispensaries where we can collect some taxes on it and keep some control. I'm glad the city did put the moratorium on just to get all the ducks in a row, and I hope they can get that done by the first of the year. I would tend to agree with Jason that that two maximum seems, you know, competition is good. I don't see where having more really hurts. And once again, I'd rather have people buy from a dispensary than a guy on the street that you don't know what's in the marijuana.
Thank you. All right, we're on question seven. All right? And this next one has to do with the budget and taxes. And we'll be starting with Al Light, who is running for Winona City Council at Large. And this question is, what ideas do you have to balance the budget without continuing to burden businesses and homeowners with increased double-digit property taxes and increased fees? For example, the sanitary sewer fee.
Okay, well, first off, and this was discussed quite a bit last night at the council meeting, a lot of people need to understand that just because when you hear a headline, 80%, that doesn't mean everything's going up 80%. It's just a portion of it. The tax levy, which originally was going to be 18%, was lowered to 11%. Doesn't mean your property taxes are going up 11%. They're going to go up a percentage of that. So, you can review the city council meetings and get more information than we can give in a one-minute reply here. But there's lots of different solutions they've discussed. They've talked about possibly a sales tax, a hospitality tax, different options, and each case is going to have to be determined individually as you look at it, and then always done in a fiscally responsible manner. Don't want to overspend, and just because you want a project, unless you have a way to fund it and a way to come up with the financing, you may not be able to get the project you want.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sam Zierden Shortridge, who's running for Winona City Council, District Three.
Balancing the budget is important. We all do that in our homes. We all need to do that as a collective at a community level, which means at city council. I am in favor of an increased hospitality tax. Our current hospitality tax, which is 4%, is estimated in 2025 to bring in a little under half of a million dollars. That's a tax that doesn't really impact Winonans. For the most part, when you're traveling, when you're staying in a hotel, that's a fun discretionary spend. That's something that you look forward to and you're not noticing the extra little bit of tax on your bill. I think that could be long-term consistent funding to help the city. Also, I think that the city needs to continue to leverage city dollars, public dollars, with high ROI grants. We've seen a handful of them in the past. We'll see more of them in the future. But encouraging city staff to go after grant money where we can get more funding and leverage our public dollars to create more dollars, that's better for everyone.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Steve Young, who's running for Winona City Council, District One.
Oh, my, to only have a minute or minute and a half to talk on this, I think I could talk on this for...
You have a minute.
Half an hour, you're right, there we go. I could talk on this for half an hour. I did not support the 11% levy increase. I felt it was too much. By statute, we must balance our budget. I do support a higher hospitality tax. balance our budget. I do support a higher hospitality tax. It's, it's rather low. Here's what I want the public to know. Council had, I hate to blame prior councils, but, but we, we've got to, we've got to be real. Four or five years ago, council had really gotten themselves into a fiscal hole and we've had to climb out. We were actually spending reserve dollars on ongoing expenses. It's kind of like spending your savings account on, on your mortgage payment. Eventually, that's going to end badly, right? And so it takes some years. We, we've all, we've all had it where we spent our savings account, right? And we have to make it up and it takes a long, hard time to make that up. That's where we're at. But we're actually making really good progress. We're now really kind of back at where we should be. And again, I didn't support the 11% levy increase. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, Scott Sherman, who's running for Winona mayor.
The double-digit increase, and I've said this before, is kind of a boogeyman, something that some people are worried about, 9%, 10%. You know, there's this double-digit thing that, that comes around. And quite honestly, when the budget, when department heads first start working on the budget, we're looking at 200% tax levy. There is a ton of work that goes into reducing that down to what it is. And I can justify every single line item that's in that budget this year and the year prior. There are reasons why we have to increase to double digits this year, or 11-something. It's, you know, there's a ton of work behind that. I'd be more than happy, like Steve said, one minute is not enough to cover this, but I would invite anyone to come sit during the budget sessions each August.
Thank you. And finally, Jason Dykes. And Jason is running for Winona City Council at Large.
I, I would probably echo everyone here that hospitality tax is, is way too low. I do try to travel as much as I can. And anytime I stay in a hotel, often the hospitality tax is a third of my total bill. So I think there's some room for growth there. We have to keep in mind that the local tax levy is only, as far as I understand, 12 million of the $67 million budget that this city utilizes. We need to maintain good relationships with our state legislators because there's a lot of money that come down, that comes down from the state. That is actually money that we've paid up. And I think that's our money and we should be bringing it back. I have a copy of the budget. It's 248 pages long in my backpack. And as I go through it, there is...
Okay. Perdón. I'll stop you there. All right. We're nearing the end of our forum. And we'd like to ask each candidate to present a one-minute closing remark. And we will begin with Jason Dykes, who's running for Winona City Council at Large.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for putting up on this forum and everyone watching. And to the city for the use of this beautiful room. I am confident that I am the right candidate for this job. And let me be clear, this is work, hard, yet fulfilling work. There is a lot to know. There is a lot to take in and analyze if you're going to be effective. And I like to work, to help people and to solve problems. That is what I do. While it can be enjoyable, this is not a vanity project. I have the work skills, the life experience, the listen-first approach, and the ability to analyze large amounts of information, information. Additionally, I am fair, I am kind, I am compassionate. I am the person you want behind this table. I am asking for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Winona City Council District One, Steve Young.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all coming tonight. Can we talk about the budget more? No, just kidding. Okay. So very good discussion, really fun to chat with you all. I'm the owner of a small business, have been for 30 years. I focus on return on investment. If I'm re-elected to serve on city council, I'd seek to leverage Winona's natural advantages of scenic beauty, strong manufacturing economy, high levels of education, to build a Winona that attracts businesses, small and large, and build a Winona that is attractive to those recruited from out of town, accepting of all, because Winona is better together. So pay no attention to Mickey Mouse, Mickey Mouse, who's writing, running a write-in campaign, okay? And thank you for your support.
Thank you. And next, we will hear running for Winona City Council at Large, Al Light.
Hi. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. And thank you all for coming out and for watching on your cable television or watching the repeat at the League of Women Voters Facebook page. In my very first political science class, we argued about what was the definition of politics. And after much discussion, a simple sentence, the art of compromise. Now, we don't have that on the national level for sure. On the state level, it's getting bad. On the city level, we want to maintain that art of compromise. We have challenges. We have things we have to solve. We have big problems. We need to do it together. We need to do it compromised. We need to do it with respect. I think I can bring that to council. It would be an honor to serve you. I will be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, if you will honor me by electing me on November 5th as Winona City Council at Large. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we will hear running for Winona City Council District Three, Samantha Sam Zierden Shortridge.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters. Your commitment to voter education is unparalleled. I hope I've shown you how dedicated I am to our community and the skill that I'll bring to council. My strong analytical ability, born from a bachelor's degree in math and a master's in business administration, paired with my strong commitment to community building, as illustrated by my volunteer work, creates an ideal, yet unique candidate. I will continue to show up for Winona in hopes of repaying all that it has given me. If you have any unanswered questions, please reach out. I want to know Winonans so I can best represent Winonans. And if you live in Ward Three, I hope you've, I've earned your vote on November 5th.
Thank you. And our final closing statement will be from running for mayor, Scott Sherman.
I'd like to say that over the past four years, I've been humbled and honored. I have learned an enormous amount of information regarding municipal government. I have met thousands of people, many of them I now call friends. Ultimately, serving in elected office is based on relationships and the relationships that you build with your community. Every time I speak, every time I write something, every time I'm at an event, I'm thinking constantly about the community as a whole. That is my job as mayor, to look across ward lines, to look across neighborhoods, socioeconomic position within the community. And I have done my very best to try and absorb everyone's opinions based on their experiences and to not discount them along the way. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
And I look forward to another four years.
Thank you. We are at the end of our, this forum. And we want to thank all of our candidates for this very informative event. The League of Women Voters would also like to thank our cosponsors, the Advocacy Center of Winona, AAUW Winona Branch, Engage Winona, Project Fine, and Winona State University Department of Social Work. We would also like to thank HBC for taping this educational event. This forum will be placed on our Winona, or on the League of Women Voters Facebook page within this week. This is the last of our candidate forums for the November election. If you have missed one of our previous forums, check out our League of Women Voters Winona's Facebook page. Tonight's forum and the other four forums will be posted on the page. And the other four forums are the Minnesota House of Representatives, County Commissioners, Soil, Water and Conservation District, and the Winona Area Public Schools. Vote411.org is an online voter guide to the candidates that will be on your ballot. This site was developed by the National League of Women Voters and supported by the Minnesota League of Women Voters and local branches. This is an online voter guide where voters can compare candidates' answers on issues important to the election. This website will provide information on candidates that are on your ballot in your precinct. Check it out, vote411.org. You can also find information on registering to vote, a sample ballot, and where you will vote, polling places. For voter registration, if you need information on becoming a registered, registered voter, call Winona County Auditor Treasurer, or you can go to Vote411, or you can go to MNvotes.gov. All three places will give you information on what you need. If you are not a pre-registered to vote, you may register at the polls. Minnesota does have registration at the polls. Note, you can vote by mail or in person at the Winona County Building on Third Street. Early voting began on February, or Friday, September 29th, and will continue until Monday, November 4th. The Winona Audit, or County Auditor Treasurer's office is open during regular business hours to obtain an absentee ballot or to, or for in-person early voting. Please check your sample ballot at either MNvotes.gov or Vote411.org. This November is also a statewide constitutional amendment on water and a county referendum on the county jail that will be important for you to read and research before you vote. Please vote. The general election is on Tuesday, November 5th. Except for a few townships within Winona County, the polls are open from 7:00 a.m. through 8:00 p.m. Thank you and have a good evening. And for our audience that's here, let's thank our candidates that have just...